Stand by, 15 seconds. 10, 9, 8, 7, 6, 5, 4, 3, 2, 1.
Good morning and welcome to the Wednesday, July 13th Board of County Commissions meeting. I am Nicole Gibbs, the Community Relations Specialist for the county. Sedgwick County was honored to host Governor Kelly, local and state leaders, and mental health professionals for a 988 bill signing celebration on Monday. Starting this Saturday, July 16th, callers in Kansas and across the U.S. will be able to dial 988 to directly reach the suicide prevention hotline for help with a mental health crisis. This hotline will be available 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. This is a landmark moment for Sedgwick County Calm Care and Mental Health Support. All registered voters, all registered Sedgwick County voters will have a chance to cast a ballot in the August 2 election. Advanced by mail ballots requested by voters will begin mailing out today, and those can be requested through July 26. Early in-person voting starts on July 18 during regular business hours at the Sedgwick County Election Office. Satellite early voting centers will open Thursday, July 28 through Saturday, July 30. Visit the Sedgwick County Election Office website for hours and locations. Sedgwick County Environment and Resources will host an informational meeting about groundwater and flooding in the South Bluff area of District 2 today, Wednesday, July 13 from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. at Hayesville Middle School. This event will help citizens understand groundwater, discuss public or possible solutions, and answer questions. Sedgwick County has had a dramatic increase in driving fatalities over the last few years. Dozens of cherished loved ones have died prematurely on our roads because of preventable car crashes. Hear the stories of those impacted, which include a few Sedgwick County employees, by dangerous driving and learn more about the Drivesafe Sedgwick Campaign at www.drivesafesedgwick.com. Commissioners, taking a look at today's agenda, there will be a resolution to set a hearing for a dangerous or unsafe structure, a consideration of a grant submission for the Defense Community Infrastructure Pilot Program, an ARPA spending plan update, a presentation of the county manager's 2023 recommended budget, a request to publish the maximum property tax levy to fund the budget, and the public budget hearing dates, and a report from the Board of Bids and Contracts. With that, Chairman, I turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you, Nicole. I appreciate it, and I want to welcome everyone that's joining us online early in the morning and those that are in the audience. I want to remind everyone that today's meeting is going to be cut a little bit short because the commissioners have another meeting outside of the building at 10 o'clock, so we're going to have a hard stop at 9:30 today. I don't believe that we'll get through the entire agenda as a result of the short time that we have to hold the meeting. So we will recess the meeting today. We're not going to adjourn it hour or before 9:30, and we will call it back to order again at 9 o'clock on Friday morning. In addition, the public comments that we normally hold at the beginning of the meeting, each meeting, will be held at the end of the meeting, which means that it probably will be held on Friday. So I just want everybody to be aware that there is a number of changes in our schedule today. In addition, we do have an off-agenda item. Because of us not having a meeting next week, we're going to move one proclamation to the day. So I just wanted everybody to be aware of what's happening during the meeting today. It's a little out of the ordinary because we're starting early, and we're ending early, and we're recessing. So that is what we're going to see as we move through the meeting. So with that prelude, I want to call the meeting to order for Wednesday, July 13, 2022. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
invocation, to be observed by a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Meitzner.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Chairman Dennis.
Present. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes on June 8, 2022.
Thank you. Commissioners, everyone's had an opportunity to review the minutes from June 8 and June 22 to move to approve both. We have a motion and a second any discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Madam Clerk, at this point, I'm going to add an off-agenda item. I make a motion that we add an off-agenda item for a proclamation. Do I have a second? We have a motion and a second any discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Madam Clerk, would you please read the off-agenda item?
Off-agenda item, proclamation declaring Americans with Disabilities Act Day.
Thank you. Commissioners, I'd like to read a proclamation that I have before me. Whereas the Americans with Disability Act, ADA, was signed into law on July 26, 1990 by President George H.W. Bush, this year marks the 32nd anniversary of this landmark legislation. And whereas the Americans with Disabilities Act has improved the lives of people with disabilities, ensuring equal opportunities, access to county facilities, programs and services, and inclusion for all citizens regardless of disability. And whereas in Sedgwick County, Kansas, most populous county, approximately 12% of its residents are disabled, for those residents with disabilities, the state is an important annual reminder of the strides made to ensure equality. And whereas Sedgwick County has incorporated this law into the fabric of the community, ensuring access to services, programs, activities, and facilities. And whereas local government entities have proactively collaborated to comply with the ADA, as evidenced by the creation and support of the Wichita-Sedgwick County Access Advisory Board, as well as maintaining an ADA Coordinator's Office within county government structure. Now therefore, be it resolved that I Chairman David T. Dennis and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim July 26, 2022 as Americans with Disabilities Act Day. In Sedgwick County and call on all residents to support inclusivity for persons with disabilities in this community and continue efforts to advise our county leadership on areas of improvement. Commissioners, you've heard the proclamation, move to approve. We have a motion and a second any discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And receiving it is the Chairman of the Wichita-Sedgwick County Access Advisory Board, Brian Powers. Welcome. Thank you for being here bright and early.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, thank you very much. On behalf of the Access Advisory Board, I thank you for this wonderful proclamation honoring this landmark legislation and this day in history. Many of us remember a time when this legislation did not exist. We've been fortunate that most in our community now have lived through, have not experienced a day without this act. I'm proud to be a member of, a part of, a community that values diversity, equity, and inclusivity. And I think today also serves as a reminder that everyone should be treated with dignity and respect. Thank you again for your time. I know you have a short agenda, so I've been brief.
Again, thank you for being here. Also, Andrew Crane is in the office today, or in the boardroom today. I didn't know if you had anything that you'd like to add to Mr. Powers' comments for Access Advisory Board. Morning, Andrew.
Morning. I just want to say thank you and for recognizing the Access Advisory Board. I do serve on that board well and will be serving on that board for a long time. And I'm happy to be on the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you both for being here today. We appreciate it. Thanks for receiving the proclamation. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New business. Item C, set the hearing for dangerous or unsafe structure.
Good morning, Chris.
Good morning, Chairman. Commissioners, yes, for the record, Chris Laborman, A, B, C, D. All right, hopefully I get this right, Nicole. So the item before you again is setting a public hearing for potentially dangerous and unsafe structure. In this case, just due to fire damage that occurred on May 6, the address of the property is 4472 South Juniper Avenue. This is in the Oklin Improvement District, was declared at least a 75% loss by the insurer. That by state statute and local regulations, that means that 15% of the insurance proceeds are received by the county in order to ensure the property is made safe after that damage. We did receive those on June 1. The 45-day decision point for any BLCC action, if we were to be in a situation where the owner has either not taken action or not been able to make the property safe, is thus up, excuse me, that says June, it should be July 16. So July 16 would be the decision date, obviously this being the last meeting prior to that. At this point in time, there was a little bit of a delay due to the move and some things that were going on with us being made aware that insurance was a play in this. We'd been trying to get some of that information out of the owner. But now that we know that, working with them on that, not just the property as it stands, but his intentions are still not completely determined. So there's a tenant involved, as you see on the slide. So we have had communication with the owner throughout, again, based on us not being sure what the insurance was going to do. Early on, we did open some cases on this property to ensure that we had that communication and would be able to work through that with the owner. And at this point, he has still been trying to work with the tenant to try to get a lot of their stuff out of there, anything that they would want to salvage, and then also some things he would like them to have out of his way so he can then further clean up. And then at that point, he can get us more into the house, get an engineer into the house, and decide exactly what he wants to do at that point. So unfortunately, that delay puts us in a situation where no repairs or substantial actions have been taken at this point, and we do have several potentially unsafe conditions that exist. So a few pictures, and I did not, we do not have many, and I did not include any interior pictures of this just out of privacy and the, again, the situation that the owner's in at the time. So though you do not see a lot of exterior damage on the house, the main concern is the interior. You can see some smoke areas where fire came out of the windows and up from the gable ends of the roof, and then just a few pictures of the back. So there has been an effort made to board it up and make it secure. That has not been entirely successful, but for the most part is getting the job done at this point in time. So again, our next play with this will be over the next few days to weeks to try to help them get that cleanup completed of some of the premise conditions and the interior conditions to then get us inside and better assess the interior, make a determination with the owner. Hopefully, we'll be able to get that done, and then owner be able to either self-remove or initiate repairs well before the date of the public hearing, which we're asking for September 7. At this point, we are recommending that the BLCC set that public hearing for September 7, 2022, and authorize the required publications. And then to note, if the property is returned to a safe condition at any time prior to that public hearing, A, B, C, D will initiate, release the proceeds, and cancel said hearing. With that, I'll gladly stand for any questions.
Thank you very much. Before I turn it over to Commissioner Howell for a recommendation, do any commissioners have any questions? I don't see any. Commissioner Howell.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for the briefing on this particular house fire. I actually was there that day. I went by and talked to the people at the scene, and it was very devastating to everyone there. So I'm glad to see that something's happening at this point. Unfortunately, there is a lot of damage. It does need to be repaired. It's in a very, you know, busy neighborhood, and so as much as I regret having to take this step, I think we do need to have, set this public hearing and hopefully motivate good repairs to this house. I did talk to the tenants. I think they do have some needs. If anybody in the community wants to, I assume that, I got them in touch with some of the people in the community that help out, people who are displaced from their homes from fires. And so I think they got, they did get some help, but they weren't in the hospital for a while. So I hope that they're, I haven't heard from them lately. I think they're doing okay, I hope, but we'll, I'll follow back up with that again and talk to them one more time, I suppose. Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion, we would set the public hearing for September 7, 2022, and authorize the required publication.
Thank you. I'll second the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Thank you, Chris. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item D, consideration of grant for the Defense Community Infrastructure Pilot Program.
Andrew Stoltz.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Tom Stoltz, County Manager's Office, here this morning to discuss a federal grant opportunity for your consideration. As we went through the pandemic, the last two and a half years, we've learned many lessons. We did well in some areas, not so well in others, and a good organization always tries to never make mistakes twice. So we are looking at ways to shore up operational gaps in the event that there is ever a repeat of a public health or environmental crisis of any sort of this magnitude again in the future. One of the gaps that we realized as we went through the COVID experience was facility-related. We found early on that we did not have enough storage for personal protective equipment, nor did we even have a supply of personal protective equipment. We had no ability for long-term drive-through clinic testing or vaccination. All of the plans that we went through over the years historically, the scenarios included mass vaccination, where we would basically take over large facilities or schools and try to vaccinate a half a million people in within a week's time period. That is not the reality of COVID. As we all recall, the vaccine trickled into the community. It was a long-term and continues to today to be a long-term vaccination process, and we had no facility for that type of scenario. When ARPA was awarded, staff presented additional facility capacity for the Health Department and for Emergency Management for funding consideration to the commission for these types of structures to be considered. During that discussion, the commission requested development of a combination single site that could meet the needs of both health and emergency management departments. Since that time, staff has created a diagram and some plans which cohabitates the operations, provides extra storage along with drive-through capacity for any type of community need in the future. In May of this year, staff became aware of the Defense Community Infrastructure Pilot Program. This program, awarded via federal grant, is designed to address deficiencies in community infrastructure which are supportive of military installations and military families. Eligible community infrastructure projects include those that pertain to schools, hospitals, police, fire, emergency response, or utility infrastructure projects. In addition to the submitted building and operational plan proposals, the grant application also required the endorsement of the local installation commander representing the military installation benefiting from the proposed project, in this case, McConnell Air Force Base. In June, staff prepared a written application plan, and through Chairman Dennis's contacts at McConnell Air Force Base, we secured the endorsement of Colonel George N. Vogel, who is the installation commander cited by the grant. The grant, if awarded, would fund the construction of the Public Health and Emergency Management Operations Center within Sedgwick County, which would serve the community, the greater community, including our active military and their families residing in the county in the event of another public health or environmental disaster. Total inclusive cost of the project is right at $14 million, and there is a 30% match to consider if this grant is rewarded, which for the county would mean a little over $4 million. If we are lucky enough to receive the grant, there are some funding options that we could consider, including use of remaining ARPA dollars, bonding, or other strategies that Lindsay and her team could figure out if the commission would will it to be so. We stand ready to submit the application for this highly competitive grant program. If the commission approves today, and we staff would now stand for any questions, as you may have, and if not, we would seek the commission to give us the green light to apply for this grant.
Well, thank you, Mr. Manager. First of all, during our budget process this year, we heard from Public Health, our Health Department, and from Emergency Management on needs for a facility, and we had some lengthy discussions on that, and we pretty well came to the conclusion, we need one facility that can meet both of those needs. In the meantime, Manager Stoltz and I had an opportunity to go over to Butler County here just a couple of weeks ago, and they've already built a facility, and so we had an opportunity to tour that, and they've got part of it for their emergency management that's hardened against tornadoes, and then a number of drive-through bays that are available. So this is a great opportunity for us. I want to thank Colonel Vogel and all of the staff out at McConnell that helped us work through the process to get approval from McConnell Air Force Base. It's a great partnership that we have with that Air Force Base here in Sedgwick County. So I think this is a win-win for everyone. So I am very happy that the staff was able to locate this grant opportunity because we all knew that we needed it. It was presented during the budget, and this gives us a chance to get all but 30% of this paid for through some of the funding that's coming down from the federal government. So I approve of this recommendation. I make a motion that we approve the submission for the grant and take the appropriate actions. We have a motion and a second any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Thank you all very much. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item E, Discussion of American Rescue Plan Act Spending Plan.
Morning, Lindsay.
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. Lindsay Pogerso, your CFO. So for the fourth official time since we found out we were receiving our allocation of $102 million in American Rescue Plan Act funds, I'm here before you today to ask for your approval of a spending plan. And so you have two documents in front of you, I hope. You have one that looks like this, which is the PowerPoint handout, and then you should have one that looks like this. So we're going to stay at a fairly high level through the PowerPoint presentation, but this document here is supplementary information that you can look to if you want to dig into any of the specific details that we talk about. So just a quick refresher of where we have been with federal funding on your first, on your PowerPoint here. What you will see is that with CARES, obviously, we received directly about $99.6 million from the federal government, and then the state from their CARES allocation gave us $9.3 million, again, because at that point in time, we had the unfortunate distinction of having by far the highest unemployment rate in the state of Kansas. So then we also had a few other opportunities that came through. We were able to get some provider relief funding into Calm Care, which helped them significantly with the downturn in their revenues at that time. And then, of course, through ARPA, now we have received fully the $102 million. So it was awarded in two tranches. We got our first tranche in June 2021, and now we have officially received that second tranche for this year. So all of that money is sitting in our bank account, and Brent is working with the team to get that money invested and work for us. So what you see then on your next slide are revised figures for what we are asking you to approve. So I think it's important to point out that there are no new projects on this list that we're asking you to approve. It's the exact same type of project and program that you all had approved back in March. But if you remember during May budget reviews, departments were talking about ARPA things that they had submitted needs assessments for, as well as decision packages. And so the commission had asked for, you know, where do we really stand with ARPA? So we worked with some of the departments that have the largest requests in here to get revised estimates, because as we all remember, the federal uniform guidance does not allow us to engage directly with vendors in advance of putting together a spending plan, because that could give them preference. So we were using loose estimates. So we've been able to move a little bit further through that process. Obviously, you heard from Adrian yesterday with regard to the public health response. So what you'll see on this slide, if there is an asterisk next to the number, it means that that number has changed from what was in March. And we're going to look at revised numbers for '22, '23, and '24, and then we will go through and dig into the details of what's driving those changes. So you can see on this slide, public health response went up, or I'm sorry, went down. Court backlog and public safety went up, and then the contingency decreased overall because our court backlog and public safety went up more than our public health went down. 2023, exactly the same scenario, except that the contingency just carries over from the prior year, so there's no specific number identified for that for now. Same thing for 2024. So when we look at the grand total, again, we got about $102 million, which makes percentages really easy, right? So public health response, we're allocating roughly 20% of the overall allocation directly to public health response through this proposed spending plan. Another 40% is being requested to support court backlog and public safety. Now, that number has gone up, but not, not a ton. It has gone from a roughly 35 to 40%. We obviously had already done the premium pay to try to prevent all of those vacancies that unfortunately, we have still seen quite a bit of. And so overall, when we take the contingency that had been adopted for the first quarter of this year that was not accessed, plus the contingency that we had for the final three quarters of this year, you have right now a total contingency of $8.2 million, which is below that 10% threshold, but we are a full year into our allocation. So what changed? Public health response, this is exactly what you saw from Adrian yesterday. The numbers that are in the spending plan tie back to what she was able to present. And so at this point, I am actually going to refer you to this handout. So there's three pages to this handout. The first page here is this revised plan that we're talking about today. This is based on updated cost estimates. The second page of your package that looks like this is the spending plan you approved in March. Nothing has changed on this page. This final page, oops, sorry about that, this final page here actually shows you the difference by project, so that you can see the specific dollars that we're talking about and rounding here on this PowerPoint slide. So when we look at this, the public health response again went down $2.8 million overall based on what Adrian shared with you yesterday. Now, you can see court backlog has gone up quite a bit, and so I'm going to talk through these at a high level. If you want more details, I'm more than happy to give those to you. So overall, across the three years, it has increased $4.5 million. There, if you remember during the budget process, we had some decision packages that we told you we thought we could address with ARPA. One of those was actually an increase in witness fees that came through the courts. Well, that is directly tied to court backlog. It was just something that hadn't been picked up in the original estimates. So now that has been included at the rate of $100,000 for full calendar years and $50,000 for this year. Because those, the idea, right, is we're going to start having a lot more jury trials, we have a lot more judges, those costs are going to go up. Doesn't mean we have to spend every penny of it, but we want to allocate those funds for it. Then the largest single increase on here is the increase for sheriff cameras. So... So when we had done original estimates, it was based on quotes for some cameras. Well, now, obviously, as that progress has progressed, or that project has progressed, and we've been able to engage a vendor for that design, there is additional cost that's necessary for the locks that go with those. There's additional cost to put in a master control system that will allow those folks who are monitoring the cameras to actually control the facility, and so that cost actually, and you'll see it on here, went up $3.3 million. That is by far the largest increase. So that brings the total for that project to $8.5 million. But as we've all heard, our detention is down over 100 positions, and so this seems like a good use for long-term funds to invest in that. There is an increase for the Ruffin Building, and that is for networking costs, that is for parking costs, and for some building improvements that were not included in original estimates. Again, as we go through these things and live through them, things change. And then finally, under the court backlog area, the courthouse remodel has increased. So when the original estimate was done, we did not have costs included for expanded DA space. The assumption was that they could take what they had, but they're actually growing their space, and so they do need some new equipment for that. So we have a small amount in for that. And then if you recall, the courts have talked and showed us pictures of how some of the COVID cleaning supplies that were used have actually damaged the woodwork in their courtrooms, and so they had put that in as a decision package as well, but because it's directly tied to COVID, rather than use general fund dollars through a capital improvement program, we have that phased in over a couple of years here in this plan. So the net effect of a decrease in public health, but an increase in court backlog is $1.6 million, and so that has simply been taken out of contingency and reallocated to these projects. Now, again, a spending plan is a plan, just like a budget. It's not set in stone. We still have to go through procurement. There's still opportunities for you to weigh in on those contracts and projects as we progress, but this just gives staff the ability to move forward with these things. So that is why we're here today, and kind of in concurrence with the recommended budget, because as you, we go through the recommended budget process, if there are ways you would like to allocate the contingency, or if there's things that you'd like to move between programs, we can certainly have that discussion over the next week, six weeks. The final thing I would ask is that you, in addition to approving this spending plan today, is that you allow finance to modify the procurement process a bit. Again, as we go through things, we learn. We have learned that we would like to enhance the communication with departments and share some of those specifics with them and have them share information back with us, and so we have made essentially one tweak on this slide that just allows us to have that kind of communication back and forth. So that is the end of your PowerPoint, because I wanted to save paper, but here is your question and/or recommended action slide. So I'm happy to stand for any questions, discussion, otherwise I recommend you approve the process.
Thank you, Lindsay. So what you're telling me is that between now and December of 2024, contingency, we have $5 million left.
We have $8 million.
We have $8 million.
Because we're able to carry forward the contingency from the first quarter.
Okay.
So on this front page.
So we've got $8 million, $158,000 left.
Yes.
Okay. But we all know that the cost of everything is going up between now and December 2024.
9.1% inflation news this morning.
Yeah. Well, that's two and a half years. We've got to ride about $8 million. So we're going to have to be very, very careful on what we decide to add between now and then. So I appreciate all of the detail that you provided us on the spreadsheet and so forth of where the spending is and where we're planning on doing it, but my concern right now is two and a half years, where if you watch the news, COVID is going up considerably. I think I saw on the news yesterday that we're up to a positivity rate of 16% in Sedgwick County, and that's only the test that we were given by people that report tests. That doesn't include the hundreds and thousands possibly that are out there that are home tests, so we don't really know what the positivity rate is currently based on Omicron. So I think we need to be very, very frugal on that other $8 million between now and December 2024. So I don't see any other questions or comments at this time. I'd like to make a motion that, oh, I'm sorry.
Your lights are not working.
Try to get, okay. Commissioner Meitzner.
Thank you, Chairman. Lindsay, thanks for going through this with me previous days to understand this better. Tell me, on this master page here.
Mm-hmm.
I know we talked about the contingency balance the other day, but is that lower right-hand corner, does that say $7 million, $59,000 versus $8 million? '21 to '24, first page.
Um, the, the version I have says 8.2, so maybe let me swap out pages with you.
You know what? Hold on. I'm sorry.
Line 31, yeah, Lindsay.
Oh, all right, I was still using yesterday.
Oh, yes, after Adrian's presentation, I got it.
Okay. Thank you, because all my notes were on the previous one, so sorry about that.
Apologies for the confusion.
My mistake, my apologies, and thank you. I'm comforted because I know we've gone through a lot of external audits to make sure that both CARES and ARPA have been appropriately paid and audited, and that's very comforting to me, so I'm, I'm pleased with this proposal as, as presented. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Sorry, my little switch was off there. I don't see any, so I recommend, I move that we approve the revised spending plan, authorized refinement of the purchasing process.
Second.
We have a motion and a second any discussion. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howe.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Thank you, thank you, Lindsay. Next item, please.
Item F, Presentation of the County Manager's 2023 Recommended Budget.
Manager Stoltz, welcome back.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioner. Tom Stoltz, County Manager's Office, here today to provide you with the 2023 Recommended Budget. This is the list of the budget team, and I just remind Commissioners the importance of budget development and budget adoption. It is, the budget sets goals for this organization and strategies for the next year, what we consider to be priorities. It guides adjustments in the, in the upcoming year and forecasts for future years. So the budget team is, this is a team effort as we go through budget. A good budget involves all employees and citizens the best we can. The, the team that puts it all together is listed here. It's all division heads and a number of finance staff, most of who are here today, and they work a lot of hours and spend a lot of time between February and current to develop what we're going to quickly go over today. The overall budget goals for 2023 through a lot of discussion, dialogue, communication with employees, and looking at services focuses on core services of the county, and the county is a service-oriented organization. Most of what we do is service. Whenever we welcome new employees to the county, I always tell them, thank you for being in the business of service, because no matter where you go, you're going to be serving people. So the budget goals for this year include that core service, and it's, talks about compensation for employees, and it talks about environmental working conditions for employees. Both are critical, and in, at least in the compensation world, we all know that it is a competitive market, and Lindsay just talked about the inflation rate of 9.1% and the challenges we have nationally with economy. And then the final goal for the year, which the commission has made very clear, is the commitment to behavioral health services in this community. So that is the third major goal that we tried to address in the 2023 Recommended Budget. The process, just to kind of remind Commission, this starts in late year before we even talk about budgets, so in this year it was late 2021, where we began to talk to employees and division and department heads, to look at challenges and strategies of what we could do better, efficiencies that we can look at, and what our environmental challenges are going forward. We meet with the commission in February at a workshop, and we listen, we met at EOC this year, and we listened to dialogue amongst Commissioners on what they thought were, was important. We do a manager budget team review with all department heads coming in and presenting. It's a dress rehearsal basically for what we do in May, which is the important part, the public discussion with the commission to talk about budget in the future year. It's the first time that we publicly began to focus on 2023 from a budget perspective. In addition, this year, we had a couple of extra sessions, extra workshops. We had a Cedric Lofton Task Force summary that we heard about. We had some pretty significant changes in Calm Care that we heard about, so we had workshops to drill in on those particular issues. And then finally is, is today when we talk about the recommended budget coming forward. State of operations, I think we all understand where we're at organizationally. We've had turnover and recruitment challenges. I had an hour-long discussion with the sheriff the other night. He's over 100, open in detention right now, and so we have many significant staffing challenges that we're going to have to battle. It's an extremely competitive labor market, and service comes from people, and so it's very important that we keep people in Sedgwick County. We have near historic levels of inflation that number changes every week, and Lindsay advised you what it is today, and we see our, we're seeing what everybody's seeing, increased fuel costs, paper, and then that's not enough. We have supply chain issues as well, which stops us from operating as we normally would. We feel it even in Ruffin now. We can't get our room up and running as fast as we'd like to do to have commission meetings over there, because there's supply chain issues on getting communications equipment in. So we feel it all over the organization. And then as Adrian talked about yesterday and Chairman's talked about today, there is a continued pandemic recovery and response. We wish COVID would go away. It is not. It's in front-page headline from the last couple of days, there's a new variant, 65% of the cases in America are caused by a new Omicron variant. So we know we're going to continue with testing. We hope we can get more people vaccinated. There are tools there that will help us move forward to keep people out of the hospital, hopefully, but we know we're going to have to continue into 2023 with a pandemic response and recovery. We get to the meat of it now, there's recommended adjustments, and these tie back to the three goals I talked about before, compensation, environment, and behavioral health. There are six recommended adjustments for employee compensation, four for environment, and three for behavioral health, and I'll go through them very quickly. The first focus on employee compensation is a step plan adjustment for EMS and County Fire. This discussion actually started in last year's budget. The commission wanted to see a step plan organizationally, so we went forward with EMS and County Fire this year. Those are very close to being rolled out. Market pay adjustments for the district attorney and his pay plan being discussed and will be considered in this budget. Pay adjustments for Calm Care and corrections staff, you've already approved corrections staff pay plan, so that adjustment is in this budget, and that's because the state has increased their budget to pay for corrections workers within their system, and we were losing people to that system, so that was our response to that. Increased hourly rates for election workers. We are recommending in this budget an 8% pay adjustment for staff not addressed through specific strategies. So corrections has already been addressed, we'll address Calm Care and other areas, but for any employee not included, we're looking for an 8% overall on January 1. And then one thing we're recommending is a pay structure adjustment to move the overall pay scale 7%. Now, this is a strategy that the county has not done well in the last couple of generations of budget. We need to start taking a look at that. Sheena has mentioned that already in her presentations. We have to move the scale every once in a while so that we don't end up back in this situation in five or 10 years again, where we have a significantly lower compensation rate than competitors, both government and, and private. So we are recommending a 7% pay structure adjustment to move the overall scale. In working environment, the three strategies are a capital improvement plan of $9.4 million, a TRB plan of roughly $2 million, some funding for an e-corrections records management system of about $78,000, and an adjustment to an HR position. We took a couple of part-time positions, made it into a full-time position, and that, to, to do that migration costs $45,000, we hope, which will help us expedite hiring for a robust hiring year in 2023. That is the hope with that, with that position. And then finally, in behavioral health, and I'll start at the bottom here, the Mental Health Coalition has been meeting for several years. They've done great work. They've hired an executive director, they've, they've got some costs, and the county share that they requested was $33,000 a year. Now, there's other partners in that as well, including City of Wichita. So we have, we have put that into this budget at the request of Commissioners. We put additional funds in for contracted mental health services for kids to the tune of about $300,000, and we put a $1 million mental health contingency in for 2023 for the commission to consider use of things to be identified when 2023 rolls around. So that, that is in this recommended budget. So all total, the county budget is a little bit north of $497 million. The Fire District budget is north of $23 million, and we have a total budget of $521 million for Sedgwick County now, based on estimated $29.30 mils for the, for the county government and $17.889 mils for Fire. The next steps in the process, depending on how you look at it, is the hard part or the easy part. This budget is, we think is close. We don't think it's there. It's time now for the commission to take this to their constituents, and we offer a lot of ways for people to become involved. We'll do a budget online at our sedgwickcounty.org website for citizens to comment. We'll do an online public forum, starting, I think, today, about 3:00, through August 23, which is day before adoption, where comments can be made, Commissioners can read. We have a public hearing in person, and I want to bring special attention to this date because it's changed. We had been publicizing August 4, which is a Thursday. There was some conflict scheduling for Commissioners, so we moved that to August 3, that is Wednesday, 6:00 PM in this room for citizens to come in person and talk about budget. And then the second public hearing and the revenue-neutral rate hearing is August 24, which is day of adoption, at 9:00 AM. So that's the, that's the recommended budget. I stand for questions, and I've got a lot of staff here. In case there's, you want to drill in on any of this, we recommend that you approve this recommended budget and take it forward to the next, to the public step.
Thank you. Commissioners, does anyone have any questions today? Just a comment. First of all, I appreciate you listening to what the Commissioners have said, not only last year, but also since we started the budget process in February this year. One of the things that a number of us spoke about last year was step plans for EMS and County Fire, and you've heard what we said, and that's been incorporated, and we appreciate that. The district attorney has been up numerous times talking with us, and I appreciate the fact that he listened to what he had to say, because we concurred with that. We're about 200 short in Calm Care. We're down in corrections. We're down in jail. As a result, that's causing some service problems for us to be able to provide the services that we need, so you listen to what our staff has told you on those areas. And most importantly, we have to be able to retain and recruit new employees here in Sedgwick County. And with the 2% pay raise that we gave mid-year, and in your budget, you have an 8% pay raise going towards the future, hopefully that will help us do those very things in retaining the great workers that we have now and recruiting new workers to, to fill the open positions. So overall, I am very pleased with what the manager's recommended budget is. The first thing I want to do is thank everyone that was involved in putting together this budget. It's a little over 800 pages, if you take a look at it. We've each got one laying in front of us right now, and those 800 pages are thousands of hours of work from our staff to listen to each and every presentation that was given by every single department here in this room, and then take that and translate that into dollars and cents and put it on paper so that we can analyze that. analyze that. There's a number of opportunities for the public, as Manager Stoltz mentioned. In addition, I know I have my Citizens Advisory Board on July 25th and Manager Stoltz is going to come out and present the budget at that time to my Citizens Advisory Board. And I, other Commissioners have already been talking to their Citizens Advisory Board about what this budget is taking a look at. But today is the first time we've actually seen what is all put together in one big document. Again, thank you very much to all of our staff that went into this and I'm going to turn it over to some of the other Commissioners at this time. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. On your slide number seven, you talked about the facility capital improvement plan of 9.4 million dollars. A while, well, about a month ago, we had talked about some changes around the Harry Street location and what's happening down with juvenile field services down there and also adult corrections. Where are we at with that plan and does, is that listed in this capital improvement?
There is no capital. Let me answer the first question first. The new director down at Stone, Steve Stonehouse, has been working with facilities and what is driving that change is the fact that the landlord at that facility needs the space that juvenile field services is currently in. So we have to find a new home for juvenile field services. And he, he gave some offers, which we have talked about with Commissioner already. But what Steve is doing is moving pieces around currently that will keep juvenile field services neighborhood based at Harry Street Mall or at the campus down at Lincoln and Hydraulic. And move some adult services strategically into some existing adult facilities and a small use of Munger Building, I'm sorry, the Ark Valley Lodge right now to house some staff. What, what you're referring to, Commissioner, is a long-term strategy of what we do with operations specifically involving juveniles. And that is a discussion for the Commission to have yet and probably set forward in a capital improvement plan into the future, either an adjustment for next year or some adjustment in 2024 consideration in 2024. We do not have long-term plan established to, I think, any of our satisfaction and I don't think to your satisfaction as well. So we need to talk about that and consider it. But I don't believe, unless Lindsay corrects me, I don't believe there's any allocation for that in the CIP.
Okay. So I just want to make sure that we aren't moving multiple departments multiple times when we could make one adjustment for both places. There was talk of moving juvenile services up to the court complex here and in reality, adults should be at the adult complex if that's what we're going to be talking about shifting around. So I understand the need for the urgency of this perhaps, but I think it's important to be strategic and not move departments multiple times. So when will we be discussing that in an open setting?
We would be glad to, I would be glad to have Steve come in with facilities. We could talk about it between now and budget adoption if that's, we could, we could do it within the next couple of weeks if that's what the Commission would like to see and have this bit greater discussion.
Okay. That's my only question. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Meitzner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Tom, for the presentation. Thank you, staff, again, for all of this. My, my background in the budget process obviously has some city history and usually it's a little more, a little larger discussion when the manager presents the budget because it's a little more, it's not been department, department by department bounced around like, like we do here at the county. So I don't have a lot of questions about it. I just wanted to say that, that each department presented and we went thoroughly through it for a number of days and a number of meetings. And so, so I'm just here to tell you I don't have any questions and thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me start by saying thank you to all those involved in developing this and it was a very long process. I see you back there. Thank you so much for doing a great job every year. I'm impressed with the product that we get through, through this process. A number of these books are developed and we will, eventually we'll see what we adopt later on as a very, very similar book. So anyways, a lot of work. I want to say thank you. I do have a few questions. Tom, let's go to page 11 of the budget book, if you have the budget book with you. By the way, we just FYI, we received, I think, I think I received my copy of this on Monday afternoon. So I've been trying to read it since then and I'm, I'm going to have a lot more questions. So I just want to say, each time we come together, I would really like it if we'd have on the agenda a chance to talk about budget and any, any questions that might pop up each and every week we come together. I think we just need to keep the conversation going. I don't want to talk about it today and then not talk about it again until adoption, which is what we typically, we tend to do it that way and I like to do it where we intentionally put this on the agenda to say, is there any other questions? Because as we, as we read this budget book, I'm going to have lots of questions. I think it ought to be public discussion rather than just private discussion, so.
We can do that, Commissioner. I'll have Sabrina put it out just as an item on the agenda that we'll read through every week between now and budget adoption.
So I'm looking at some, some changes here on, these are the summary pages. I'm trying to compare this with your slides. Are these supposed to match? They don't match. Okay. We have a number of changes in this budget that are kind of listed here as significant changes, adjustments.
I'm looking at page 11 now. I'm seeing this also for the first time. I'll go ahead and let Lindsay.
Well, I have a question on page 11 specifically, but in this section of the book, I'm just saying, there's a number of significant adjustments on three pages here.
So Lindsay Purus, your CFO, yes, there are a number. What is called out here are the specific items related to these overall goals. We tried to keep it short. We did not point out every single change, but they are outlined at least for the county property tax funds here. And then throughout the book, you can find it in each individual department's pages.
Do we, don't, don't go too far. We have in here, it lists 1.5 million for overtime for the fire district. I'm just curious, is that something we've done before?
So for the fire district, we have the 1.5 million in there. That is, we're increasing the contingency and we have, we have increased the contingency for 2022's budget for the same type of reasons, for compensation changes that we didn't know. Because they don't have the county general fund contingencies to back them up, we make sure they have a robust contingency within their budget now.
So, but it says overtime. So overtime sounds like it's just we, we, we pay additional salary out when they work extra hours or whatever. The contingency we've had in the past was actually salary adjustments for our staff. We actually changed the rate of pay and that type of thing because, again, the contingency was used for that. I don't know how much of that contingency was for overtime specifically.
So for the 2022 budget, if you recall, we had two things that were happening. On the day of budget adoption, Commissioners approved the extra 2% pay adjustment for all fire district employees. And then we also had some employees that were transitioning from salaried to hourly. And so for the fire district, we did actually have a contingency earmarked for that purpose in the forecast, if that makes sense.
I guess it's just, it's the issue of the term overtime that I'm focusing on here.
Okay. And we can, we can adjust that, but really it is just bulking up the contingency to make sure we're able to cover whatever costs may come.
Okay. And then also the summary of this, these three pages is 4.511 million dollars. And that actually includes both the governing body, Fire District Number One, as well as the Cedric County. Those are all added together to get that 4.5 million dollar number.
Yes. And so it's the net change, right? So you'll see that there are a few reductions throughout. For example, if you look further down on highways on page 10, there are some reductions. So it's the net change.
Let's go over to page 73, if you don't mind.
Oh, boy.
I'm getting into it, sorry.
It's all good.
I'm trying to find places in the, in the budget book that kind of summarizes our year-to-year comparisons. The last update resolution talks about a property tax levy of 173.3 million dollars. And I don't know where that is anywhere in the budget book. I'm looking for that number, but I do see, it's interesting in the 2023 proposed budget here, it talks about, there's a tax summary of, it shows all the different forms of taxes altogether, 254 million dollars in taxes. That's all kinds of sources, but including property taxes, but it lists it as 185 million dollars.
And, and so that is the combined fire and county.
Okay. That answers that question, sure.
And with regard to your other question about the levy, if you go to page 34, we have it there.
Okay. Thank you for that. I'm just getting familiar with the book still. Thank you for that. Okay. And then my, my last question probably would be on page, I hate to do this, but page 281. And I'm going to have more questions later, I have no doubt, but I'm noticing that there's a big jump. Well, maybe I'm wrong about this. Okay. Shows five FTEs on the Fire District Administration of 3.8 million dollars. How's that possible?
So if you go to page 283, that very first table here, will show you how that breaks out by contractual personnel, all of that. So we talked about administrative charges yesterday. Administrative charges would be included in here. Many of the day-to-day operational costs that aren't tied to a specific station would be tied into administration. So it's not just your personnel costs, it's all of those other costs as well.
Okay. All right. That helps greatly. Well, I don't have any more, any more questions at the moment. I'm sure I will next week. So for this, again, thank you for putting this back on the agenda. Again, great job of presenting this today, but a lot of work to do. So thank you for all what you've done so far. And Chairman, that's all my, that's all my comments at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. Tom, thank you so much for your presentation today and for all the work that's gone into this by all of our staff. I mean, it's just an incredible amount of work that goes into this every year. I also really appreciate that you've taken into account what we've said and really making our staff our number one priority this year in compensation and making sure people are, feel valued for the work that they do for our county. It's incredibly important work and everybody that works with our community is doing a service to, for our community, so they need to be compensated in a way that they feel valued. So this is really important that, you know, that's really been our number one priority going forward this year and I appreciate seeing that in the budget. So, and then also with the mental health stuff as well, that's so important that we have that contingency because as we know, things change and things come up and especially as the task force is going to continue to, to be meeting every once in a while if, if new things come up from that and we need to be able to address those, having that contingency is going to be extremely helpful. So I appreciate all the work that everyone has put into this. Thank you so much and look forward to getting this passed. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other questions. I've got one, we have it on our CIP for a number of years, a question about an election office. And it keeps getting pushed aside, pushed aside. But with all of the things that are happening, national, state, and local about elections, I think it's time to resurrect that. And as we resurrect it, because there's so much emphasis from the federal government, is there any grant money that's available to try and improve our elections office?
So to answer the first question about the CIP project, it is funded. There's the 3 million in cash that had been earmarked for that purpose. So that's why it doesn't continue to show up in the CIP, but the project is authorized. We would be able to proceed with that. In terms of whether there's federal grant money, we will check. I do not know of any off the top of my head, but we have a wonderful resource that's helping us right now. So we'll reach out to them and see if they can help us do some research into that and get you a, a good answer.
Very good. And I know it's not in our budget, but the state legislature added 15 million dollars to their budget this past year for mental health. And I've talked to the manager about it, but I'd like to bring it out in the open where everybody can hear what my request was and my question was, what I understand is that KADADs is interested in building one in this region, but 15 million won't build an entire facility. We're still looking at, at some spark money, another 25 million in order to be able to finish that up. And that's really at the top of our priority. But one of the questions that keeps coming up over and over again when we talk to legislators is where is this going to go? Well, they're kind of putting the cart before the horse in some aspects because where it goes is depending on money for us to be able to buy property to put it someplace. So the manager and I and, and Commissioner Lopez talked about this the other day. There's 15 million sitting out there someplace in a budget. Are we able to go and ask the KADADs to send that 15 million to us so that we can go out with an RFP and procure some property so that we can then figure out where this thing is going to go in the future? And at least we can answer the question, yes, we know where it's going to go. So I, I don't know if the managers had a chance to research that because we just talked about it the other day, but I think it's important that everybody knows that the money is out there. If that is a stumbling block to us getting the other 25 million, we can resolve that. So I don't know if you've had a chance to talk about it.
Chairman, Tim and I talked about it briefly yesterday outside of our offices and, and I'll try to recollect that conversation for you and Tim can come and correct me if I'm wrong or give greater detail. But it's my understanding and Tim's understanding that there's a legislative subcommittee that is going to be meeting to discuss that money and how it is to be allocated and, and the strategy behind moving forward with that. So at this point, I think we communicate with KADADs, we dial into that subcommittee and we wait for them to give direction. Tim and I, is that correct? Okay. He's saying yes, so.
Okay. Well, very good. Again, this is a state issue, but we're willing to be participants in this and if they gave us the money, we'd build it and turn it over to the state. But it's state funding that we need. It's not funding out of our general fund or any other funds that we have here in Cedric County, but it's critical to us. That's at the top of our legislative agenda. So I just want to make sure that if there's a stumbling block, that if we can move past that, that we do.
We'll, we'll keep you informed on that.
Super. And I also want the public and the rest of the Commission to know that we had talked about this. I don't see anything else on your presentation at this time. We will continue to add it to our, our agenda each meeting as we move forward. So at this time, I make a motion that we receive and file.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item G, authorize the publication of the maximum property tax levy to fund the 2023 Cedric County budget. Publish notice of the public budget hearings on August 3, 2022, and August 24, 2022. And provide notice to the county clerk and notice via publication of the revenue neutral rate hearing on August 24, 2022.
Well, thank you, Madam Clerk. And we have Lori in here. Everything we just talked about in this 800 and some pages won't happen without money. And so Lori is going to tell us what it's going to take.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Lori Anshaw Walter-Airi, Budget Director. The item before you this morning is requests for authorization to publish the notice of public budget hearing, which also establishes the maximum budget and the maximum property tax levy for the 2023 budget. State law does require the county publish the time and place of a budget hearing at least 10 days prior to that hearing. The notice must include a summary of the proposed budget that includes the maximum proposed spending for a given year, the maximum property tax levy proposed to fund the budget at a fund level, and the state is often referred to as the last update because after this point, the total budget for property tax funds and maximum property tax levy cannot be increased without republishing the required notice and holding, holding another public hearing. This notice will also publicize the intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate in the recommended budget, which does keep the mill levy rate flat with the 2022 rate. However, this flat rate of 29.370 mils technically exceeds the revenue neutral rate of 27.363 mils. This will authorize us to notify the county clerk and make the publication in the county newspaper and on the county's website of the August 24 hearing on exceeding this rate. The maximum proposed budget is 497,530,461 dollars to be funded with a tax levy of 173, 381,324 dollars, based on a mill levy rate of 29.370 mils. The first public hearing will be held Wednesday, August 3 at 6:00 PM. And like the manager said, this has changed before. We had it a day later on Thursday, the 4th, which is what was in the agenda item, but this has changed to Wednesday, August 3. And the final public hearing will be held here in this room on Wednesday, August 24 at 9:00 AM. And budget adoption is also scheduled for August 24. I'm happy to stand for any questions. If there are none, then I recommend you authorize the publication.
Thank you, Lori. Do I have any questions from the, from the board?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just curious on the resolution that we had passed earlier that talked about resetting to 29.359, was that officially rescinded by a vote?
Yes.
It was rescinded?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So just, I guess this does capture that 0.011 mil increase, which was a technical adjustment from last year.
Yes.
And that results in altogether about $100,000 increase in revenue on this budget. Is that about right? Is that about right?
Yes, about 65,000.
65,000?
Yes.
I know I'm being picky, but I really wish we would just still follow that precedent. I think that was a, I mean, I'll just say that we live under Senate Bill 13 now, and Senate Bill 13 requires a revenue neutral rate. And I understand from talking to our CFO that our revenue neutral rate would be quite a bit lower, about two mils lower if we, if we try to standard that rate. So rather than dropping this property tax by a couple of mils, we're actually accepting the technical adjustment of .011 mils increase. And I understand this is just a, this, this vote is just establishing our maximum authority. I get that. But I can, I can tell you, I'm not sure I can think of a time in the past where we've actually reduced our budgets significantly after, after the last update. So I'm very concerned about, once we pass this, I think our budget's going to pretty much spend this much money. And I think that's, that's a concern of mine. The revenue neutral rate, the, the state has redefined tax increase. I heard, I've heard the news about our, our friends across the street, this, I think 29 years they have not increased taxes. That's what I think the narrative was. But their mill levy has gone up with technical adjustments and their tax dollars have gone up significantly over that same time. So even though our mill levy is roughly the same, I have actually not done the calculation yet, but how many more millions of dollars is this budget over last year? It's about 11 point, it's 11, 11 and about 11 and a half million dollars increase? A little bit less?
I think around there, yes.
It's at least 11 million dollars, though.
Yes.
So about 11 million dollars more than last year. And I'm seeing yes.
Yes.
Okay. So part of me says, I understand things cost more. We have to increase our salaries to be competitive with wages. Fuel costs more, utilities cost more, uniforms cost more, and all it goes. Everything costs more. I get that. But I guess I would like to split this with the taxpayers and say, let's not capture all of that. Let's split the difference and let's try to get the mill levy down just a little tiny bit somehow. So I'm uncomfortable with establishing this authority because I think I don't, I don't, I don't trust us to find deficiencies in the budget, which is really our challenge. Once we pass this, it's going to be very difficult to find ways to, to reduce our budget. But essentially, if you, if you, if you cut your revenue stream just a little bit, then it kind of forces you to go find those efficiencies in the budget. So I'm a little bit uncomfortable with this today. I'll just share that as a comment to, to the bench, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure what I'm going to do yet. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Lori? Again, this sets the maximum rate. It is not what will be the set rate the day we adopt the budget because we can remove things from this budget if we need to. We can't add above whatever we pass today. That's the law and the rules. So it doesn't mean that this is what the final outcome is going to be. We still have to go through the rest of the budget cycle. So I don't see any other comments. So I move, we authorize publication of notice of public hearing and intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate regarding the Sedgwick County 2023 budget. The publication shall include a total budget of 497,530,461 dollars and an ad valorem property tax levy of 1 million, 173,381,324 dollars, which is approximately equivalent to 29.370 mils based on the estimated assessed value, valuation, and subject to technical adjustments. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. And Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm probably going to vote no today. And it's not because I, I don't agree that this is, I think I've known for a long time this is where this is headed. I'm not trying to be difficult. I just want to make a point today that we, I think we need to find ways to find efficiencies. And I think when you reduce, reduce the revenue stream, it forces you to that issue. I will say, I'll repeat myself, comments I made in the past. I think we need to redefine, if you will, our mission and Sedgwick County government is. People in the, out there have had to tighten their belts this year like they haven't had to tighten their belts in a long time. They are struggling in this economy. And I know you mentioned about a 9.1% inflation rate over, I think, the last 12 months. I feel like, anecdotally, it feels like more than that. I've heard some people say it's 14%. I mean, I'm sure that's a technical number that you've given this morning. It's, it's an official calculated number, but I think on some things it's much higher than that, maybe not on other things. And so I think other parts of the country may feel it differently than we feel it here. That's a, I think that's a national number, that 9.1. I think it's up to us to find some efficiencies. I mean, everyone in their, everyone in our, in our community that, that we serve has had to find ways to, to make it with less money. And they're being pinched on all sides. I think we have, we have the same obligation. And to the extent that our property tax levy is going up, and if we capture all this in the budget, which I'm sure we probably will, means we're going to basically match the inflation, inflation rate. So I'm having trouble saying that we're really attempting to, to lean up Sedgwick County government and actually find ways to, to reduce the burden of government a little bit somewhere. And I just, again, I'm not, I'm sure there are some efficiencies somewhere. I'm not completely aware of what those things are yet. I'm sure that I'll learn more about that going forward. But today, I just think that we, we really should, and I know it's a little thing, that .011 mils to me is, is, is a problem. But I actually, even more than that, I think that we have a 9% growth in our property tax funds. And by the way, if you look at Wallet Hub, you know, this is not, this is not Sedgwick County, this is Kansas as a whole, but we are a very high tax state. We're 14th in the nation in terms of tax rate comparisons for the whole rest of the country. Thankfully, Sedgwick County is, is the third lowest mill levy amongst 105 counties. We do that because we have a lot of assessed value. But that assessed value has gone up essentially, I think, I remember what the appraiser said, but I think residential went up about 8% last year. And that was a, that was January the 1st of 2022. Hold on to your hats for 2023. I think it's going to be even more than that. So at the end of the day, I just want to, I just want to challenge us to find a way to, to share in this economy with the people we serve by finding efficiencies and finding ways to, to let them know that we feel their pain. And I, so today, as much as I hate to do this, I'm going to have to vote no. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. I don't see any other comments. Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
I am going to vote aye, but I do concur with some of the statements that Commissioner Howell said. And my vote of positive is again, today, just establishing the maximum. And I've had some discussions with the budget process that would find small areas and I will have to figure out if, when it comes to the final, final vote, if I'll approve the, the final budget at the mill levy that it would be potentially proposed at unless we make an adjustment. So I concur a lot with what Commissioner Howell has stated, but again, this is just establishing the maximum at, at this point. So I'm going to, I think it's responsible to vote aye. So I'm voting aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
No.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Well, I appreciate the comments from Commissioner Howell and Commissioner Meitzner. But I also want to recognize the fact that this budget recognizes that we need to retain and recruit the future employees for Sedgwick County. And if you look at what really happened in this budget, a large portion of what's happening in the budget is our efforts to retain and recruit those employees. The rest of the budget has pretty well been held down by the staff. A lot of things did not end up in this budget that were requested during all of our briefings. So I understand the, the comments from both Commissioner Howell and Commissioner Meitzner, but the fact is that it's going to cost us more to recruit and retain, and that's what the focus of this budget is. So I vote aye. At this time, I'd like to recess the Board of County Commissioners meeting for July 13. Call the Board of Governing Body of District, Fire District Number One for July 13, 2022. I will call the meeting to order at this time. Madam Clerk, next item.
Roll call. Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Chairman Dennis.
Present. Next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular fire meeting minutes on June 22, 2022.
Commissioners, everyone's had an opportunity to review the minutes from June 22. Move to approve. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call a roll.
Commissioner Meitzner.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
New business. Item B, authorize the publication of the maximum property tax levy to fund the 2023 Fire District One budget. Publish notice of the public budget hearings on August 3, 2022, and August 24, 2022. And provide notice to the county clerk and notice via publication of a revenue neutral rate hearing on August 24, 2022.
Welcome back, Lori.
Thank you. Good morning again, Chairman and Commissioners. Lori Anne Showalter-Ary, Budget Director. This item is identical in purpose to the item you just approved for Sedgwick County. The publication sets the maximum budget for the fire district at 23,472,045 dollars and establishes a maximum property tax levy of 19,610,712 dollars based on the intent of maintaining a rate of 17.889 mils. Like the county, this item will also publicize the intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate of 16.853 mils in the recommended budget. The first public hearing will be held Wednesday, August 3 at 6:00 p.m. And the final public budget hearing will be held here in this room, Wednesday, August 24 at 9:00 a.m. And budget adoption again is scheduled for August 24. I'm happy to stand for any questions, but if there are none, then I recommend you authorize the publication.
Thank you. Questions for Lori on the fire department, the fire district number one budget? I don't see any questions at this time. Therefore, I move that we authorize publication of notice of public hearing and intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate regarding the Fire District Number One's 2023 budget. The publication shall include a total budget of 23,472,045 dollars and ad valorem tax levy rate of 19,610,712 dollars, which is approximately equivalent to 17.889 mils based on the estimated assessed valuation and subject to technical adjustments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Might surprise you with this one, but I, this was actually more simple. The, the county budget's very complex, and I think there's lots of opportunities there. Fire district is a single public service, and I have challenged the narrative I've been saying for a little bit of, little bit of time now that we need to find efficiencies to get those wages up. And again, that's one of my goals, is to get the wages up for the firefighters. I think they deserve that. Having said that, I don't think we've, I don't think we have found those efficiencies just yet, but I will, I think we'll continue to work on that. But I think the bigger, the bigger solution to the fire district is to, is to do some restructuring on how it's funded. And again, I'll continue to ask for legislation, ask my colleagues and my manager to, to consider legislation that would solve this problem and get that mill levy down around, I would hope, as a good goal, to about 13 mils without reducing what we do in Sedgwick County and actually get the wages up. I think it's possible to do both things at the same time. That's a, that's another discussion for another day. So for today, I will support this motion today because I think we're going to continue working on those efficiencies and I think legislation is a longer, is a longer, long-term answer to this problem. So today, I will support the, the motion. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. I concur with Commissioner Howell that we need to look at some efficiencies in Fire District Number One. I expressed some concerns yesterday during our staff meeting about some of the expenses that we incur because we're providing free service to a lot of people in this county. We have mutual aid and automatic aid for areas that aren't providing any money whatsoever to Sedgwick County Fire District Number One. I also challenge the fire chief and chief crisp to look at efficiencies throughout their entire department. I am concerned about the optics of taking million-dollar fire trucks and going to lunch, taking million-dollar fire trucks and going to Dylan's and buying food when they're only on shift for 24 hours straight. I don't know why any other organization couldn't bring their own food instead of taking a million-dollar fire truck and burning $5 a gallon diesel fuel in order to go on personal errands. So as far as I'm concerned right now, I'm going to vote for this, but if they don't come up with efficiencies prior to the adoption of this budget, I probably will not vote for their budget. So we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call a roll.